Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'll call to order our town meeting at 5:30 PM on July 21st. Please take a moment of silence to remember our first responders, those men and women serving here and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with Mass. General Law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask, is there anyone in the same taping this meeting as well? Hearing none. Ryan, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay. All right, moving along here. Public comments? I'm not aware of any. Jeannie, can you advise me if anyone has come in and registered?
No one has registered.
Negative. Council comments?
Through the chair. Mike?
Tom?
No, it's Ralph. I would just like to say, after going through the budget, I really enjoyed the format. I enjoyed the way it was listed. It was a lot easier than what I've seen in the past. I'd just like to put that out there and thank Mary for compiling it. Echo that.
Thanks. I had the opportunity. This is at least year three. I've seen all the changes that have been made. They certainly streamlined the process and I believe made it easier for everyone looking at them to be able to follow. So I commend everyone involved in that process myself. There is no town manager's report. We are one week out from our last meeting and Mary gave us a full report at that meeting, so there was nothing to be added. There are no minutes to be approved at this meeting. And under Communications and Correspondence, we do have a letter. Kathy had a little involvement with Eric Lesser. Kathy, could you elaborate on that?
Certainly. Eric Lesser's administrative director, Joel McAuliffe, reached out to me a little more than two weeks ago regarding the passage or the potential passage of the 2020 Transportation Bond Bill and inquired if there might be any transportation projects on our back burner that we would be willing to submit. So I spoke with Tom Christensen and he assured me he could come up with a very, very fast list of possibilities. And in the end, he submitted, or we both submitted to Senator Lesser, a $2.2 million makeover, lack of a better word here, for the intersection of Route 83 and Maple Shade West, was the CVS intersection with the gas station and the bank and the funeral home.
Infamous Rotary.
Well, the other infamous Rotary, yeah. And then, so this email that's in your backup material just confirms from Mr. McAuliffe that the East Long Metal Project was included successfully in the Transportation Bond Bill that did get the necessary votes to pass. What that means, because there's always a caveat on these kind of bills, similar to a couple of years ago when we were informed that the police station would be, or police be the recipient of 1.1 million for a rehab and remodel of their police building. The money is earmarked, but it has to be released by the governor in order to actually have the money flow. So in a way, we're in the queue, if you will, and it's always dependent on the final bill submitted by the governor and how much money he wants to release for funds. But it's still good news, even though it's not imminent good news. It's potential excellent news to have the state finance the overhaul of that intersection.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. Kathy, is this just a Senate bill or has this been signed by the governor?
It has, it's a Senate bill. The governor has yet to sign it, but it's in his, it's heading toward his desk.
Thank you.
Now it's heading to the House of Reps and then it'll go to Conference Committee.
Tom, I heard you mention the word Rotary. I believe these funds are allocated for Four Corners.
No, I know, the infamous Rotary. That's what I call it. Because we have the notorious Rotary in the Four Corners. It's the infamous.
There's no other questions regarding the, under Communications and Correspondence, I would ask for a motion to jump ahead on our agenda up to 9A and maybe we can continue with that until 6:30 arrives so that we can start our public hearing.
I move to suspend the present agenda, moving to number nine orders of the day and returning to the normal flow of the agenda at 6:30 for the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, hearing a second. Any other discussion? With no discussion, I still feel that this probably requires a roll call vote. So I will start with Pat.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We are now up to orders of the day. Under Licensing Matters, I don't believe we have anything to discuss under Licensing Matters. Moving to 9B, under Financial Matters. I'm not sure, did somebody chime in? No? Okay. So moving to Financial Matters now, I would ask, Ryan, if Jim and Christine are in the audience so that we can get a recommendation from the Financial Oversight Committee after they make a presentation?
Sure, if they're in the audience, just raise your hand up. I don't see Christine.
I wonder if she realizes that we started earlier tonight.
She's aware.
I did call Chris and maybe she's just having a little bit of technical difficulty
Can we ask Jim if that's his backyard?
No, it's actually North Riverfront Park in Springfield, Massachusetts, on the Connecticut River.
Looks real fast.
Thank you.
Here's Mary. Oh, she's muted right now.
Christine is still muted.
Yes, I was thinking, maybe I can give her a quick call on my cellphone and have her, there we go.
There we go.
All right. Everyone's here. Christine and Jim, thank you for joining us and we look forward to your presentation this evening and a recommendation. The floor is yours when you're ready to start.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Jim and I are here this evening to present an overview of our work during this budget season. We hope you've had the opportunity to review our packet outlining our recommendations. It is our intent to give you a brief report on our committee's work and answer any questions you may have. When we started our review in April, the prospect of furloughing employees was under consideration and within two weeks, it happened. Seventeen staff members from general government were furloughed. Some are still furloughed in this new fiscal year. All requests for new positions had been denied by the town manager and further cuts were requested and complied with. Conference attendance, mileage and travel expenses were deleted and within the Town Hall, it's good to know there are certified professionals who are postponing their educational accreditations for another year. Public safety departments revisited their budgets and made cuts. DPW did likewise. They really put into action the, quote, "we're all in this together," unquote theme. We support that no appropriations be made to the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Fund. Last year, we were able to deposit $2 million on that account and no deposit will be made into the stabilization fund this year. We deposited $43,000 last year. The bottom line is that we are in agreement with the town manager's budget with the exception of the school budget. As you may be aware, the town manager is obligated by the Charter in Article 6, Step 4, to present, and I quote, "the school budget as adopted by the school committee." The requested amount is what is contained in the town manager's budget. We commend the school committee on leaving 11 positions unfilled in their first round of budget adjustments. Two new positions from the wish list were withdrawn. Two positions left unfilled are the technology specialist and the assistant principal at the high school. One middle school position has been eliminated, which was a literacy support specialist. There were six retirements, two of which were paraprofessionals, one 10-month secretary and one 12-month secretary. However, there were no furloughs. The following is the history of the steps taken during the budget process as it relates to education. The initial school budget request, and I'm going to round some numbers just to facilitate giving you the meat of this. The initial school budget request was $32.5 million, a 4.45% increase or nearly $1.4 million over the previous year. After discussion with the town manager and members of the town council, the school budget was reduced by $776,000, down to a 2% increase. Subsequently, at one of our financial oversight meeting, members of the school committee and administration were asked to cut an additional $200,000. The figure was agreed upon. However, the school committee voted to cut only $143,470, retaining $56,613. So the school committee total cuts were $919,000. Our committee stands by the request to cut the additional amount of $56,613 and these are the reasons why. There are capital projects approved by the Capital Projects Committee that are not included in the education budget. The first being $1,260,000 for feasibility study for the high school. If approved by the Town Council, $122,000 of debt service will have to be paid. We suggest that the school budget reduction of $56,613 would help pay close to 50% of that cost. There's also the Chromebooks at a cost of $50,000 contained within the IT budget. Capital request, the capital request is for the one-on-one program for the students and therefore is an educational expense. And there is also the electrical gear replacement at the high school at a cost of $119,115. So on a taxation this year, the education capital projects will cost $191,115. In addition, there are school-related expenses that are not in the school budget. They are embedded in other departmental budgets as follows. The cost of principal and interest debt service on past school projects payable this year is nearly $1.9 million. Operating costs of $489,285 for educational support is contained in the IT budget. Building repairs and utilities for the schools is within the DPW budget will cost $71,518. Police Department School Resource Officers stationed at the high school with a cruiser cost $1,000 plus per year and the supplying of crossing guards. The approximate educational expense within other town budgets to be paid out is $3,030,000. So adding capital projects and school expenses charged to other departmental budgets, the additional money to be raised by taxation for educational purposes is $3,431,000. Bottom line is, the cost of education to the town is not simply the requested school budget. Rather, it amounts to $35,025,000 or 55% of the town's operating budget. Now here are some of the factors we considered. Education has always been a priority in our town. No doubt about it. However, it is not the only priority. Public safety, public health, infrastructure and general government are just as important. The town has always exceeded its local contribution to education and that will continue. With our recommendation, the town will be exceeding the state's requirement on its local contribution by $1,837,871. Further, there are additional monies available to the school district. The school department has or will receive approximately $260,000 from the CARES Act. The state and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have pledged $202 million for a new COVID relief fund grant to support school reopening throughout the state. $182 million of that figure will be formally grants to the districts allocated for cost with health and safety precautions, preparations rather. Other education monies may be available as time in the legislative work, such as the Student Opportunity Act that was passed in 2019 to provide extra funds for the different school districts in the state. So currently, the Chapter 78 school aid amount is unknown at this time and it may be cut, level funded, or increased. We were conservative this year using last year's aid amount in working on our projections. When Chapter 78 aid amount is known, the town's portion of the school's budget numbers can be revisited and adjusted accordingly, either up or down. Our recommendation for the education budget is $31,594,089, which is an increase of 1.3%. If the Town Council accepts our recommendation, at this time, we project a 47 cent increase on the tax rate. As numbers become available and figures are calculated, I caution that that projection may change. In closing, we remind you that this is a provisional budget. State aid is known. It is a common sense budget based on meeting the needs of the town, preserving savings for challenges that may be ahead during this COVID-19 era. Throughout this process, our committee has always kept the taxpayers and the fiscal welfare of the town in the forefront of our deliberations. I would like to recognize some members of our committee who may not have joined us this evening. Diane Bishop, Michael Kane, who is now ex-official, and Thomas O'Connor. We thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, Jim and I will try to answer them for you.
Ralph?
One question. On page seven, under Other Financing Uses, you have Community Preservation Fund. For the FY 2020 budget was $263,759 and for the budget for '21, it's completely removed. Can you explain community preservation? I mean, I understand we're getting the money. It is through taxation. Is this just an accounting issue?
It is, yes, Mr. Page. It is an accounting issue. What it is, those two transfers are payments of principal and interest. The $80,000 and the $26,280 are payments on the brown property. And so basically, it's money in and money out. They transfer to us and we pay the debt and interest on those projects. It also includes the full final.
I do understand that I'm talking further down on the page.
Oh, okay.
Other financing uses of $200,000.
Chris, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
It is basically an accounting issue. What we found is it was already embedded elsewhere in what we were taking into account. So by having it here, we were double counting it. So it was actually, was made it twice the expense for our forecast. So we eliminated it here. It's not eliminating the contribution because that's coming in. It's just removing it from being counted here in our projections.
And so by removing it here, doesn't that slightly affect the percentages and all as you go forwards? Because it looks like we have a savings of $263,000.
It would probably affect the calculations of perhaps the percentage increase or decrease from FY '20 budget to FY '21 projected. You're correct. But I would say that it would, in the overall, probably be somewhat non-material. But it is a good question because it does kind of sit out there and we had a lot of discussion about it before we finally satisfied ourselves that we were double counting it.
Yeah, it just looks like all of a sudden we're saving an extra $263,000 when we're really not. We're just, we're correcting a mishap.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim or Chris? Okay. Chris and Jim, I just want to thank you for your contribution of your time and your skill. This is the second year I've had the privilege to work with you both on this committee and I'm sure everyone in the Town Hall, residents, everyone throughout Town Hall really commend you for all your efforts and the valuable information that you've presented to help make our job easier. So thank you again.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure to serve.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you both.
Okay, under Financial Matters, my recommendation would be I would ask for a motion to bypass 9B2 until after the public hearing. It would make much more sense and there'll be much more information to help us with where we go with these decisions.
So moved?
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? I'm hearing none. We'll start with a roll call vote, starting with Pat.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So continuing along, under 9C, Old Business. It's written as discussing of parking for the pizza shop patrons. I think you're all aware, at our last council meeting, all of us council members, including our town manager, received a letter with, from a concerned business on Shaker Road. The main concern was parking violations. That led, because it was in the hands of our town manager, she passed on all the concerns to the appropriate department heads. They're all being viewed and we're hoping for a solution or remedy done shortly. Mary, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add to that?
That's exactly what happened. So I think several of the department heads have weighed in and we can communicate those results to the abutter, who was the author of that letter.
Okay. Under New Business, we're looking at approving a location for early voting for September 1st, 2020, for our state primary. Jeannie, could you let us know?
Sure. So the September 1 date is the state primary and the state is requiring seven days of early voting, including Saturday and Sunday. Right. So we had a challenge with this because we usually use the library community room for early voting, but that room is being used for quarantining and sanitization of library materials as they come into the library. Other town spaces I was thinking of are being used for purposes with curbside pickup, PPE, storage. So I reached out to the school, Burchland Park Middle School, where we usually have our polling location and we are able to use a portion of the gym for early voting. And the days, the days I'll let you know start Saturday, August 22nd, which is a Saturday. And I'm designated 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock PM. We're required to have at least four hours voting on the weekends. We'll also have Sunday, August 23rd, 10 to 2. And then Monday, the 24th through August 28th on a Friday, 9 to 4 PM. So I'd like the council to approve the early site as Burchland Park Middle School for early voting. And I really want to thank Superintendent Smith and Burchland Park Middle School Principal Tim Allen for accommodating us. I was in a tight spot, so I was glad that they could do this. They have their hands full trying to accommodate the students who may or may not come back on September 1st. That's still unsure. And with all of this going on and their preparation, they were gracious enough to allow the clerk's office to use that space for early voting. So I'm just looking for the council's approval for that as required by Mass. General Law.
Pat?
I move that the Town Council approve Burchland Park Middle School as the early voting poll location for the September 1, 2020 state primary from August 22nd, 2020 through August 28th, 2020.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Kathy?
I understand that there needs to be a reasonable window for early voting. But what is, did the state explain the rationale behind Saturday and Sunday voting?
They did not. I know that they wanted to expand all options, including the mail-in voting and the early voting in person, of course, the election day. But that answered, in the clerk network of emails we have, there was some pushback on it, but there was no really reason why they want to include Saturdays and Sundays. We have an option usually to include a Saturday and that's up to the town, but this was mandated at that time to be early voting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. So we'll start with a roll call vote with Pat.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. The motion passes. Thanks for all the info.
Thank you.
Glad you were able to locate a spot, so.
Thank you, too.
Under D2, which would be action items for our next meeting, we'll defer that toward the end of the meeting here. Once we compile the information that we might need for those summary actions. And we are approximately 19 minutes short of being able to start our public hearing. So I would entertain a motion for a recess.
Removed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Pat?
Aye.
Tom? Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Ryan, if you could pause the camera. We'll be back in about 17 minutes.
All right, you're good to go. You're live.
Thanks, Ryan. It is now past 6:30, so we're going to continue our meeting with the public hearing. This meeting has been continued from July 14, 2020, in regards to the town manager's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2021. To the public for their comments is outlined by Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. Our council members this evening are Marilyn Richards, myself, Mike Kane, Tom O'Connor, Kathy Hill, Pat Henry, Ralph Page, and Donnie Anderson. Jeanie, could you read the legal notice into the record, please?
In conformity with the requirements of MGL, the East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 14, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom webinar to review the proposed FY 21 operating budget as outlined by Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter for the Town Council, Jeanne Plunklet, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Jeanie.
Welcome.
Point and information, we're going to have Mary present the budget. And then we'll open up for public comments. After public comments are completed, that will be closed and council comments will happen. And any other pertinent information will happen after that point. So Mary, anytime you're ready, could you please present?
Sure. I'm just going to give you an update from what was presented last week. There were three minor changes to the draft that was submitted and posted on our town website last week. Those three changes are as follows. The sources of revenue increased by 868. That amount was necessary to be increased because that's the amount of the assessment for our Westcom transfer from civil dispatch from East Long Meadow to Westcom. And that's the precise amount, the 125,868, that we will be getting back in a development grant from the E911 Commonwealth source. So the, also increased by 868. Make that transaction a net even. It's income and it's also expense. Also, the total uses decrease was $4,284. The decrease is the result of eliminating the steam pipe debt service on the capital projects program where was a steam pipe, Phase 2 steam pipe project for Maple Shade School. There will be no debt service due on that project until fiscal '22. So the result of that is to subtract $5,486. But then from that $5,486, we had to add in the 868 that I just referred to. And we added $337 to the debt service on the potential bond for the school feasibility study. So all of those three transactions resulted in a net decrease of $4,284.58. The only other change to the draft was the addition of a position on the Council on Aging organizational chart that was inadvertently omitted from the original submission of that chart. So, I mean, I, do you want me to repeat everything I said last week?
I'm familiar. I would open it up to the floor to see if there's anything else, any pertinent information that anyone else would like to hear.
Mike, I've got a question for Mary. Under the Health Department, it says that they're now taking care of the monitoring of the wells for the gas emissions and stuff.
Yeah, yes.
Wasn't that a fire department deal? And I mean, I believe one of the wells is directly behind the fire department. And why the change? And did it affect both budgets? Or did we just see an increase in the Health Department because now they have to maintain that?
Well, I think what you're referring to preceded my first appearance in the town of East Long Meadow. So I'm going to defer that answer either to Amy Petrowski, who I see is in the audience, and/or Bruce, and/or Paul Morissette. So could any of you three help out, Counselor Page? If, if.
They all can.
Hi. So I'll start, and then Bruce and Paul. So the, this has always been under the Health Department, especially because it's a DEP. So the regulatory, I'm trying to find Ralph. There we go. The regulatory agency looks at health to maintain this. The Fire Department was the one doing the daily monitoring. And then when they increased their services to include the ambulance, they needed to have more guys ready to go out faster than they did when they were not doing that. So Chief came to us and said, we don't really have the capacity to do testing that's required anymore. We got Bruce involved and his guys started doing some of it. But in the budget 519, Ralph, are you talking about 519 or the capital request?
I am talking about a footnote on the side that says you're now responsible.
On what budget?
I knew you were going to ask that. I've got so many different budgets in front of me.
So the reason I'm asking is because the ATC does the monitoring and that's always been under 519. Nothing has changed there. Under the capital, we're asking for adjustments to that, and Bruce can speak better to this than I can. Because it's a SCADA system and it's a whole DPW issue.
So it's actually under 519, health, non-salary.
Great.
20.7% increase, mosquito control vaccination, gas monitoring services, groundwater sampling.
So the ATC money in that account has not changed. That bill has not increased. What you're seeing there for increases are, the major increase in that line item is, we've received, we started receiving a lot more complaints than we ever did. And the last couple, last year it went up 20% and the year prior to that, it was about 57%. And one of the major things that people wanted to see, and in fact, many people came to town council, was to us to use the bylaw that is written for the Board of Health to make the adjustments and corrections to non-compliant properties who are creating a nuisance. So that's never been in the budget. So it's been really hard to enforce when we don't really have a mechanism to do anything about it. So this year, for the first time, the major adjustment into this line item is not ATC. That's always been there. It's the money to correct the public nuisances. And we've already used that this year a couple times.
Aren't the public nuisances, though, supposed to be attached to their taxes? And we're supposed to recover that along with?
We recover all of it, but someone has to pay the bill. So the lien could take years to pay back. And the $200, what do they call it?
Administrative fee.
That's attached to it. We might not see that for three years. So in the meantime, we had no one to pay it, and I had no money in my budget to do it. So this line item is the front, the people who we hire to do this work, to pay the bills, and then we put the lien on the property.
So hopefully, at some point in time, we will see in receipts the money as we recover it.
Right. So Don is notified. Yeah, Don is notified and they have a process. I'm not sure what that process is, but.
And is this all the wells? I think there's some over on Allen Street, too. The different dumps or whatever, the methane gas?
Yeah, this is to monitor those wells. Paul's guys never do that. They did the, it's different monitoring. It's a ground, the groundwater system. Bruce, will you help me out here, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we have obviously two landfills. We have one, obviously, the Summers Road landfill. We do do some testing and some monitoring on the methane collection system behind the, behind the fire station and the Allen Street landfill. So we're actually just getting going on the Allen Street landfill. But yearly, water samples need to be taken per the Mass DEP on the monitoring wells at the Summers Road landfill and the methane collection system area. So that's what, I'm assuming that's, I don't know what's in her budget, but I'm assuming that's what that money is for.
This is the water quality at Summers Road landfill.
Okay.
So this is water. Whereas what the Fire Chief guys used to do was the gas. They never looked at the water sampling.
Right, but there is a catchment area for the water and is tested at the methane site also. Yes.
So this increases for the water sampling? And so the methane?
There is no increase for the water sampling. The quote that we got. The quote that we got, I think, is $1,000 more than it was last year. So we paid, we paid this every year. It's been in the health budget since I can remember.
It's kind of weird how this kind of goes. The Health Department actually runs the transfer station, methane collection, and the Allen Street, but the DPW oversees all those projects and works with Amy to obviously per budget and things like that.
So actually, if I'm looking at this, that probably shouldn't have even been on there because it really hasn't changed. It should have been nuisance properties instead.
So what else? So that line item also has now Sharps in it. So in the past, that's been paid for out of a revolving fund. And I'm not sure exactly where you're looking at, says that's new, because there's only three things that are new in that line item. There's the nuisance properties that we just discussed. There's the Sharps program. So historically, that's been done under a revolving account. And I found a much more economical way to do it because our seniors use it for diabetes and things like that. And it's a heavily used program, but we have to charge them so much money to maintain it. Now what I have is a big Sharps recycling bin, and they can bring it back in any bulky rigid plastic container and just drop it in that bin. It costs everybody a lot less money. So I got rid of the revolving fund and I just rolled it into the 519 account. So you'll see no requests on this year's revolving fund, and that's been taken by the general fund. The balance that was in that account is gone. And then the last addition to this line item is the increase in the mosquito control money. Last year, I think it was Mr. O'Shea was asking about what we're doing to. And you'll see, usually it's $18,000 line item. This year, it's been increased to $21,000 to account for any necessary treatment due to last year's triple E findings. So that was, it went from 18 to 21.
Okay.
Pat, do you have a question for Mary, or would it be one of the department heads?
Thank you, Mike. I have a point of order. I believe that in a public hearing, we're supposed to hear from the public first and then council questions and so forth. I could be wrong.
Okay, the way I view this is Mary's making her presentation. And because she wasn't here during the duration pertaining to this particular topic, she asked the department heads to elaborate on, or continue with that portion of her report. So if there are no other questions at this point, I'd ask Mary to continue with her report.
I don't see any other hands, and I'm finished with my report, Mr. President.
Okay. The report is finished, so now we can open up our public hearing for public comment. And Ryan, is there anyone in the audience at this point with comments?
If you are in the public and would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, so we will close the portion of the public comment and open up for additional comments from council members. I'm assuming there are no other questions from council members at this point in time.
So, Mike, if I may?
Yes, Ralph.
Looking through the basic budget and all, I'm fine, but I have multiple questions on the capital. Do we want to do one first and then go to the other?
I would think it might.
Questions at once.
It might make sense and be, instead of being redundant here, if maybe we start with some of the motions and then once we have a second on those motions, we can get into discussion. Would that satisfy your request?
Sure.
Mike, if I can interject.
Sure.
Some of the capital general fund amounts are included in motion number one. So I think you might be better advised to deal with the questions because if there's any questions or discussion that results in a change in what's been recommended by the finance overs, by my own budget, it would affect the dollar amount that's reflected in budget in motion number one.
That being said, this is a little bit different situation than normal. And I think everyone understands that there is a dollar allocated to, and anything with budget or capital could affect that number, as Mary stated. So we will entertain questions at this point in time before we continue with motion one. Ralph?
So if you want me to start, Stormwater Enterprise Fund. I have a concern that the total revenue has changed from one year to the other. And my question earlier today to Mary was, did the user rates change? And from what I understand, after being pointed in the right direction, there's a chart after motion number seven, which shows a breakdown of all the user rates. That does not coincide with the current bylaw that was passed for it. Specifically, LUC 300s and 400s, which would be commercial and industrial uses. In our bylaw, it states that it'll be charged at $500 per year. In this chart, it specifically goes curve in that and starts to break it down. If you have, let's say, less than an acre, we're only going to bill you at 150. If you have one to two acres, the rate's going to be this. And I don't think we can do that. I think our bylaw is pretty straightforward that it's specifically $500 a year. I don't disagree with doing it this way. It's a great idea, but I think before we do that, we need to change the bylaw that allows us to do it.
Mary, I would just say, over the last few years, I've been part of this process. And Ralph, this is how it's been done in the past. A motion's been read and both parts of it have been satisfied with a vote affirming the department head's recommendation and the motion at the same time. But I would entertain any comments from Mary or anyone else on this subject.
If you would allow Mr. Fenny to weigh in, he and I have been back and forth since Counselor Page asked the question earlier today to try to get an explanation on the, what appears to be the conflict with the bylaw, which, Mr. Fenny, I think, if you're out there still in the audience, can you comment with the last information you gave to me?
Yeah, absolutely. So during the creation of this bylaw, I believe Pat Henry. Yeah, absolutely. So during the creation of this bylaw, I believe Pat Henry and Tom O'Connor was part of that conversation. And in one section of the bylaw, um, it states, "The town council shall have the authority to set and modify the user fee rates." So that the total revenue generated by the said charges and my secondary source of revenue. Shall be sufficient to fund the town's annual stormwater program. So I know that was in there and I know we discussed it during the, um. During a bylaw meeting, so that's why we put that caveat in there. Because we did have discussion based on what we find in our stormwater system that needs to be modified. And/or increase charges if we find contaminants and things like that. So that's why, um, we put in that last statement and I, Ralph, I don't have the whole bylaw, but it's I, I, I. So that's why, um, that's why that's in there for that, for that reason specifically.
So through the chair? I do, I do have the full bylaw in front of me and you're correct. That is what it says. But what you've done is you've come up with a different way to charge. The different, um, divisions. So instead of. Instead of it being a flat fee across the board for all commercial and industrial at five hundred dollars per year. Which what you quoted would allow us to change that to five fifty, three fifty or whatever, but it's straight across the board. Instead, you've changed it to say, hey, we're, there's now different classes of industrial and commercial. There's smaller ones, there's medium ones, there's large ones. And we're gonna, we're gonna change the, the rate on each one. And I don't believe the bylaw allows us to do that.
Well, I.
If we wanted to say straight out, hey, the fee's going to be three fifty across the board, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Right, right. Um, and that kind of gave us the kind of latitude, I guess you could say, under land use codes. During the, obviously, the, um, the, the beginning of this, this whole process with the stormwater fee. This is only the second year. And I, I, I guess I'm at the mercy of the council on how, um, each of you guys feel. I don't think I'm outside my boundaries when coming up with this stormwater fee, but, um. I'll leave it up to you guys to make that decision.
Patrick?
Thank you, Mike. I was on the bylaw review committee and I concur with Bruce that in fact, we talked about having latitude. In setting and resetting the rates depending on the size of the property and depending on the costs of. Of the increasing costs that we knew would come down the line. I believe that it would be impossible to, or it would be impractical to set a bylaw that, that would have to be changed as a bylaw every year. And that's why we wrote that in there so that it could be changed and presented to the council. I would also add that this information was put together and presented to the, to the council through the, um, the normal routine. Of their mailboxes in March. So we did have a chance to look at this and if there was anything really untoward about it. We certainly had the opportunity to say. And finally, I feel that, that what Bruce has done is fair. There may be a different way, there may be a better way, but I think it's fair as meet with. What we thought we were doing when we created the bylaw and the wording that we put in the bylaw.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point?
So one more point, Mike. I, I was looking at the numbers and it looks like if we went with the same funding as what we did last year for stormwater. They would still have sufficient for the entire fund. Because they have an excess that would be in there. I honestly think we need to relook at this bylaw. The wording is not correct. Rates are different than how the rates are broken down and applied. If we're not going to follow our own bylaws the way they're written, then what good are the bylaws?
Any other comments?
So. If you want, I can go on with other, uh, funding and questions as far as capital projects. If, if that's okay.
Um, in terms of efficiency, I would say yes. I mean, normally, I think we all know that a motion would generally be read. We'd look for a second, it would open up discussion pertaining to that motion. But I, I will allow it in terms of efficiency at this point.
And Mike, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because I do think it makes a difference, like Mary said, with motion number one and the total budget. I have questions, um, with regards to the water enterprise fund, the nineteen ninety seven truck number four. That they're replacing it with a wheeler. I, I have questions for Bruce, uh, real quick. Is that truck, I know it's in the water department, does that still get used year round as based on plowing and stuff like that? Because if we're not using the truck year round, a ten wheeler is useless for us. It's extremely excessive for what we need. And at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, I think we could easily drop it down to, uh, something like truck number ten, which is at two hundred and fifteen thousand. Which is very comparable to what they already have.
I'm trying to pull him, uh, back in. I'm just having a little difficulty. I think you broke the button, Ralph, let me pull him back in.
Are there any other questions at this point in time?
I, is, Mike, if I may, as a point of clarification and expediency. If we approve the budget as is, we're not approving, we're not sanctioning spend expenditure of all these monies at this time. Until, as we've always said, and we talked about this numerous times. This is our best guess at a budget today so that we can operate more efficiently. And that Mary has something she can hang her hat on. And down the road, when we know what state funds we receive, we're going to be able to amend that budget. And we can address some of these other issues.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So through the chair. If we approve the budget as it sits and we say, yes, these capital projects are good. They go out tomorrow and purchase them. How are we going to amend that? How are we going to look at that? I, I think we have to look at each project as we go and say, is that a good capital project? Is that a good way to spend the money or should we not? I'll throw in. We've got a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar capital project for a new sixteen foot lawnmower. That I don't believe is necessary whatsoever. I have done calculations on it. The mower that we have, the newest one's only three years old and I don't believe we need a second one.
I'm not going to, uh, if I may, Mike?
Tom, please.
I don't disagree with Ralph, with Ralph is saying, but again. We're, we can give direction, we can pass the budget and give direction to the town manager. Not to expend monies out of the capital side of the budget. Until we have an opportunity to know what our state funding is going to be in the fall. Unless there's a need for expediency, in other words, there's an immediate need to purchase something. Due to cost or, uh, or to replace something that's already broke. And maybe she can come to the council and, uh. Bring us that information on a, on a monthly or weekly basis, depending on the meetings to address those. I think to try to take everything out at this point in time. Might just, just make it more difficult to manage the whole process. But I don't disagree with them.
Um, I'd like to make a comment myself at this point. I would agree, I, I would like to see a budget passed this evening and I think we all recognize that this budget can be amended. Later date, when more information becomes available. All the department heads and committees have worked on this budget for no less than seven months. And I believe we're at a very good point right now and we have that safety net to be able to adjust. Those numbers down the road as, as our revenue sources become more available. With state funding, meals tax and whatever it might be. So I would hope in good faith going forward that if, if we, um. Need to make adjustments, that department heads wouldn't be running out and spending money before. We really know what we have to work with later in the fall. But I would ask, um, Mary, if you're on the same page.
Oh, I am all one hundred percent on the same page as that. I can assure the council that we're not running out tomorrow to spend all this money on the capital projects. It'll be a minimum of forty five to sixty days before we can even begin to think about it. Don't forget, we're still mired up to our eyeballs in COVID. So we have, uh, an enormous, uh, obstacle ahead of us. Normal business practice is a thing of the past and, uh, I don't know when it's coming back. So I, I want to put your, your minds at ease that. Heck, we haven't even bonded or spent some of the projects that you approved in fiscal twenty or fiscal nineteen. We're going back to fiscal oh three, if I recall, a chart at a recent town council meeting where you had approved projects going back fifteen years. That hadn't yet been implemented or funded. So, um, we're not, we're not going to be banging down the door in the next week or two. And with respect, that would allow us time to address Ralph's, um, point about the bylaw. Discrepancy, uh, with, with Mr. Fenny's understanding and to clarify some of these other things. So, I mean, my perspective is that we are, I'd love it if the budget could be approved. To get us at least on our operating budget on a solid footing so that departments can move forward. And then we can take some time, uh, and thoughtfully go through these capital projects, particularly the ones that. Uh, are causing some conflict with a couple of people and determine whether they're ripe for funding this year. Or if they can be deferred till next year. But I would also remind everyone that this was the product of a capital committee. That met weekly for eight or nine weeks and also, uh, the finance oversight committee. The recommendations that that committee makes, uh, are incorporated. Or they do incorporate the capital projects as reflected in the budget, so. That's my nickels worth. There's a coin shortage, remember that.
What I'm hearing here and, and, and good faith going forward that we understand the concerns that Ralph has raised. And, um, what we are missing is a lot of the information that will be coming, coming down the pike here at some point in time. But, um, so we'll, we'll have to start with these motions and see where we go with it and see if we can, um, get a budget passed. If everyone has the level of comfort that, um, none of these monies, it won't be a race to spend these monies. Knowing that we don't really know what we have to work with till a later point in time. I, you know, I don't want to put Kathy in an awkward spot, but I'm going to ask you that this is, this situation is a little bit. Out of the ordinary. And what I mean by that is that generally, the president would have, uh, be totally engaged in the whole budget process. For at least a minimum of a year and we end up with a working budget prior to reorganization. So Kathy had, um, let, let's just say eleven and a half months and two weeks, if you will. Experience with working with the different committees, working with capital, budget, finance, working directly with Mary. Worked with all the department heads over the last seven months. So Kathy, any information that you can add that you feel could be valuable or create a better level of comfort amongst the council members would be appreciated.
Well, I would, um, echo what, um, Mary has, uh, offered in response to Ralph's concerns about. A difference of opinion on certain capital projects that, um. Even if we weren't in a, a COVID, uh, environment. The likelihood that our approving a budget tonight and the, uh, various department heads. Go forward and begin, uh, writing proposals for various purchases is very, um. It's not realistic because it just doesn't happen that way. You would think in a perfect world it ought to, but it doesn't. It takes time to, particularly, um, when the money to appropriate has to come through bonding. The, our accountant, uh, treasurer have to work the, um. When Hilltop Securities to find, locate, um, favorable, favorable sources for bonding. So it's a much more drawn out process than would meet the eye here. Coupled with the fact that, um, the projects we approved a year ago on the capital have yet to be bonded for. So that may, that has to happen first. And it may, um, alter the, our ability to even, um. Bond for a fair amount of the new list. And I say that only because of the hours that the finance oversight committee has spent in discussion over this. Not only do you have to look at the, the actual retail price tag of the, the capital asset. But you also have to factor in, um, that what the debt service is going to be through the course of the duration of the bond. So it's a very technical process and I've probably, um, told you everything that I am aware of. And have probably exceeded my knowledge of bonding and debt service based on what I just said. But, um, to Mary's point. There should be no trepidation here from anyone about approving what is in front of you. Because in all likelihood. We, we know we're coming back again to modify it once the governor's budget is solidified and, and approved. And we know based on, um, our director finances. Review of what can be bonded from last year that we're going to have to modify this list. So giving a nod to it now does no harm in being able to, to adjust it later.
Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. I, I'm not a member of the finance committee, but I've certainly been following. The actions of the finance committee for the last several months, listening to your Zoom meetings and the scrutiny that. Comes into play with every request before the town. And, um, the fact that these items have gotten this far, we're not hearing the justification from the department head what, what need was there. To make the finance committee support this particular addition to the capital plan. I think comfortable with what's in front of us right now. I'm also comfortable with the fact that we are not going forward with purchase orders tomorrow. But I do feel that there has been so much energy and scrutiny put into this process. That it deserves, it deserves support this evening. So those are my thoughts and, and Ralph, I don't disagree with your, your, um, concern about certain items. But I think it's important that we see the whole picture as to why these particular items are important now during COVID. And, you know, when we're trying to save money wherever we can. So those are my thoughts.
Matt, I, I saw your hand up earlier. Go ahead.
One way to move forward, maybe please everyone, is to say, open it for questions. But if you want to make a change, you must make a motion. So questions can be answered simply and quickly. But if you are suggesting a change, you need to make a motion and then we can, we can vote on that. It's just a, just a suggestion to, to make, because I agree with Marilyn. I think we, we have a lot of information here and we have enough to move forward.
Kathy?
Just a, a, a point of information relative to Pat's remarks. Yes, we can do that if you have a question and it, and you're, the result of it is that you want to change, um, a, a dollar amount. Or, uh, the inclusion or exclusion of something on the capital lists. That can go forward and if it passes, just please know that the content of all fifteen of these. Motions that are, uh, that we have to by statute go forward with. Well, the, it'll alter the actual numbers, which would probably put us in a sticky spot tonight, too. We can't just guess, guesstimate like, you know, knock seventy thousand off. It would have to be recalculated and we'd have to probably postpone this approval for a future meeting.
Ralph, I saw your hand up earlier. Do you still have a question?
It all depends on how the board wants to go forwards. I do have a question on bonding for the feasibility study at the high school. I have never seen something that wasn't hands-on, like a truck or property or something bonded. This is a study. To bond a study, I just, I completely disagree with. I would rather see us put it to a vote, a debt exclusion vote, for the entire amount and let the entire public, all the residents of the town, take a vote on whether they want to spend $1.2 or $1.6 million or whatever it comes out to.
Thanks. Patrick?
I was not recommending motions. What I was saying was that, as a council, we have the opportunity and the right to ask questions, and we have the right to make motions. And we also have the right not to second that motion or to vote that motion down. So I think those, I just want to clarify that I'm not recommending we make changes willy-nilly, and I don't think there will be changes if the proper procedures followed with motion and a second and a vote.
Are there any other questions at this point in time? Well, all the questions are definitely, go ahead, Kath.
If I can, please. You heard Chris Sagni speak this evening at the top of the meeting, and her report, in a nutshell, it parallels, and the recommendation from the committee, parallels line by line to what the manager is recommending, with the exception of how to fund the specific amount for the school department. So I just want to, for my council colleagues, to be clear on that. When you look at your motions, one motion would support the figure for the school department in Mary's budget. The other motion supports the recommended figure from the financial oversight committee. So it comes down to your deciding which figure you are most comfortable with supporting, and then that is, in effect, really the total package that you're willing to vote for.
Are there any other questions?
So, Mike, I'd like to make a motion that we remove from the capital projects the line item with regards to the feasibility study for the high school and that we submit that as a debt exclusion.
Thank you. So I'm waiting to see if we have a second on that motion.
I'll second that for purpose of discussion.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion?
If I may, too, I mean, my discussion, my piece of this would be, having sat on the finance committee, we did talk about this quite a bit, and we did not discuss debt exclusion as an option. But this is, as Ralph has pointed out, this is a major undertaking for our town. And for us to allocate $1.2 million towards the feasibility study, which we're going to be paying for for the next five years, is also contingent on us building a new high school. And if the town decides that's what they want to do, then the money's well-spent. If the town decides not to do that, then the money is poorly spent. And so we're talking $1.2 million, so maybe debt exclusion is the way to go.
Thank you. Pat?
I believe debt exclusion would increase the tax rate directly. Is that not true?
No.
If I can speak to that, Mr. President?
Please do.
My understanding is it can, it will affect the tax rate only for the period of the length of the bond.
So, through the chair, my understanding is debt exclusions are not part of your tax rate, but everyone is billed. So in other words, if there's a debt exclusion of $1 million, that doesn't go into the calculation of your tax rate. That's why it's a debt exclusion.
I believe that's correct. Steve's in the audience. Why don't we ask Steve if he can answer that?
I am actually, I'm not positive on it, but it sounds like the town's going to be, taxpayers are paying something, be it as a separate bill, i.e. like a betterment or as part of the tax rate.
Right, but it's a separate bill if it passes.
If it passes, yes.
Any other discussion? Well, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, so we'll have a roll call vote here. And I can start the vote with Marilyn.
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Pat?
No.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
No.
And I'm a no as well. Okay. Moving on, we have approximately 15 motions in front of us. I think it's appropriate for me to read the first motion here. It pertains to the financial oversight committee and the conversations. That being said, I move the town vote, I'm sorry, okay, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $63,644,001 for the purpose and charges in anticipation of revenue for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2020, in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and all acts in amendment thereof and including in addition thereto, Chapter 849 of the Acts of 1969, as amended for the operation of the town departments as contained in the Town of Eastline Meadow operating budget, as printed in the chart with this presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made part of hereof by reference entitled "General Fund Use: General Fund Operating Budget Fiscal Year 2021." Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second it.
Question? Mike, is that motion 1A, the $63,644,001?
1B. No, 1A.
It is. It is.
That's not motion number 1.
1 Alpha. And it's identified as representation from the financial oversight committee. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? So I'll start with a roll call vote, and Marilyn? I'm not singling you out. I'm using you as our chart, but I'm going to try to do this backwards. So we'll start with Don.
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion passes, and I'm ready for our second motion. I don't know, do you all have copies of this here? Okay.
So through the chair, I would move the town vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 to fund the compensated absences reserve account number 8226.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll start with a roll call vote. Try it again this way. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion passes.
I have motion 3, and that is I move the town vote to raise and appropriate, transfer and reappropriate, and borrow for capital projects for the 2021 fiscal year, a total sum of $2,597,370. The purposes and in the amounts set forth in the chart published with this presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "2021 Capital Projects," as recommended by the financial oversight committee as follows: Raise and appropriate for general fund capital projects $1,9940 to be bonded and paid from the general fund capital projects $1,709,430, for a total of $2,597,370 for general fund capital projects.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Ready for motion 4?
Thank you. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate for sewer enterprise fund to be paid from the sewer enterprise vehicle reserve fund, $58,358, to be bonded from sewer enterprise fund of $972,500, for the sewer enterprise total of $1,030,858. You want me to continue with 4B?
I would read 4B so everybody understands that there's a choice here. It's going to be one or the other.
No, actually, there are just subsections of this. They're all enterprise motions. 4B goes to water.
Oh, okay. I didn't even see. We got 4C and 4D as well.
Yes. Sorry for the interruption.
So we're, point of order, we're voting, we're discussing 4A. There was a motion. Was that motion seconded? And we're not discussing B, C, and D yet.
That's correct, and I did not hear a second on the motion as of yet.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded now. Any discussion? Therefore, we'll start the voting with Don, please.
Yep, just on 4A, yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I think the same councils have all four of those.
Thank you. I'll read the next one then. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate for water enterprise fund to be paid from the water enterprise vehicle reserve fund, $100,000, to be bought enterprise fund, $404,908, for water enterprise fund total of $504,908.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion passes.
Okay. I'll read 4C. To be paid from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $235,000.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I don't see where this motion really explains what's to be paid from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. I mean, a motion to be paid from Stormwater Enterprise Fund really tells you nothing.
Through the chair, I agree with Ralph. Just maybe, this should be maybe just a little more meat to the motion.
Mary?
In the package from the financial oversight that you were all copied on, there's a summary, two-page summary of the capital projects and the funds from which they are to be paid. That enterprise, the Stormwater, would be funding a street sweeper. It's the only item for capital projects from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. So it's.
Mary, she's right. It's incorporated. We're just trying to find a way to tie it together in form of the motion. But I agree, I'm fine with that. It's just, just needs maybe a little clarification in the motion, that's all.
I guess you could say it's for the MS, for the street sweeper to comply with our MS4 permit.
Perfect.
Okay.
Mike, can I make a motion to amend the motion to say?
I appreciate that, yeah.
Make a motion that the street sweeper, per, what was the reference again?
The town's MS4 permit.
Per the town's of Eastline Meadows MS4 permit to be paid from Stormwater Enterprise Fund in the sum of $235,000.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So we're voting to amend the most.
Yes.
We'll vote on the original.
Yes. So, Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That confirms the motion has now been amended, and we can vote on that motion now. It's, the motion's been rephrased, so now we're voting on the original motion or the motion identified as 4C. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Pat?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. We're now ready for motion 5.
4D.
Just one point of order, Mr. Chairman. Maybe we can rephrase motion 4 to incorporate the language and reference so we can avoid having the amended motion.
Absolutely.
And all I have is a simple language in front of me, to be paid from the ambulance fund, an amount. So I don't know, maybe Mary can fill us in.
This third, I'm sorry, I think it's the fourth, year two of a three-year lease for the ambulance out of the fire department, out of the ambulance fund. It's a contracted obligation, and it's year two out of three, out of a three-year lease.
Can I make that motion then?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we pay year two of a three-year contracted lease for the ambulance, which I believe is leased to own, from the ambulance fund in the sum of $135,775.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a, that concludes motion 4D. Now I'm looking at motion 5. Now I'm looking at motion five.
I move to increase the water rates from $3.50 to $3.60 per 100 cubic feet for fiscal year 2021. Said rate has been factored into the water enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy? Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, the motion passes. We are entertaining motion six.
I make, I move to increase the sewer rates from $3.50 to $3.70 per 100 cubic feet for fiscal year 2021. Said rate has been factored into the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. Motion seven. I move the town vote to appropriate the FY 2021 stormwater fee schedule as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made part hereof by reference entitled Stormwater Fee Schedule. Said rate has been factored into the sewer enterprise fund for the fiscal year 2021.
Um, that's a typo, Mike. I'm sorry as I look at it. The last sentence, said rate has been factored, it should read into the stormwater enterprise fund.
Is it the last sentence? You said the said rate has been factored into the, is it supposed to be water?
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Stormwater. So.
I'll second that, Mike.
I, I believe we might need to, um, rephrase the motion and vote on changing the motion before we can vote on it. Would you agree? So I'll, I'll make a motion to change the language. Now the motion to read. I move the town vote and appropriate, uh, fiscal year 2021 stormwater fee schedule as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion is made part of hereof by reference entitled Stormwater Fee Schedule. Said rate has been factored into the stormwater enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021.
Just a point of order. It may have been like a verbal typo. Did you mean to say vote to approve or is appropriate, appropriate, or are those interchangeable?
He, he read, he read appropriate by mistake, I think. Um, it says approve.
Okay, so I, my first sentence, I said appropriate instead of approved?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll try this again. I move the town vote to approve the FY 2021 stormwater fee schedule as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion, and it's made part hereof by reference entitled Stormwater Fee Schedule. Said rate has been factored into the stormwater enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
So the motion's been seconded. To change the motion to, uh, the motion that I just read. So roll call vote starting with Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And, um, the, the motion that I just read, I'm looking for a second on that motion now.
Second.
So the motion's been, uh, made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Further discussion? I'd just like to, uh, say once again, I don't believe, um, as a motion that we can approve this uh, because it's in direct conflict with our existing bylaw.
Thank you. So, um, I'll entertain a roll call vote based on the motion if there's no further discussion.
If I may, through the president, I, I agree with, with Ralph. I, I don't, I'm not sure. Since this is in the bylaws, and it's also in the charter that the council has to approve all fees, I'm not real comfortable with this fee schedule the way it was presented. So, uh, I'd have to say I, that we not move on this motion.
All I can do is reference back, reference back to last year and the topic, the, the subject that we were speaking about earlier. I believe that, um, that discussion pertains to, um, water and sewer. So Mary, do you have any, uh, input on that?
Uh, no, I, I, as Mr. Fenny said, this is the procedure that was followed in the past. I understand Mr. Page's, um, point of concern about the language of the bylaw, but I thought the council had dealt with that a little earlier tonight. But, um, I guess the motion could still go to a vote and, um, unless it's, unless it's the pleasure of the council to, um, veto the motion.
Well, I would ask, I mean, it, it seems to me, just from past experience, that all enterprise funds have been treated the same, and this subject pertains to our, our last conversation and is true to water and sewer. So it, it will come up again, but, um, Ralph, do you have?
So just to be aware, last year was the first year we had a stormwater fee enterprise fund. It was created, it was created with a bylaw, it was passed, the fee schedule was passed. Somewhere along the line, we have an adjustment to a fee schedule which never got approved through a bylaw, and that's my contention. Whether you want to pass the motion, not, uh, look to amend the bylaw at a later date, that's completely up to the council.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the fact that, um, we could entertain the fact of amending the bylaw at a later date. But Pat?
I believe that by this action tonight, we are actually amending the fee schedule, which is our privilege to do as a council, given the language that was deliberately put in there, allowing the fee schedule to be changed and presented to the council. It's not as though Bruce can make his fee schedule whatever he wants. He has to present it to us, and we have to say, yeah, that's, that's reasonable. And I think that's what he has done. And unless we feel, in my opinion, unless we feel that his change is unreasonable, I feel it falls into the language of the bylaw that talks about being able to change over the, being able to change the fee schedule and present it to the council.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Don?
Question, does this motion also serve as, uh, agreeing to modify the fee schedule? Because is this considered a presentation? And by us voting on it, we've agreed to, for this year, to modify the fee schedule? Or is it something more substantive where it has to go into the charter?
It's my opinion, it does. Uh, we are agreeing to revisit the fee schedule if needed.
I agree.
The funding, the funding table is attached as part of this motion. My understanding is that we're voting on these numbers. Correct?
Yep.
Point that, yeah, that would be an exhibit attached to the motion, so. Ralph?
So my last thing is, again, I believe the bylaw is pretty clear that we can change the rates, but we can't change the way the rates are created. That's very clear in the bylaw, and I, I just, I'm frustrated that a department head can just decide to readjust and that we're going to take a vote without holding a public hearing, um, to change the bylaw.
I would agree with, uh, Councilor Ralph.
I would just assert that the Board of Public Works is the, uh, authority that, that proffered that to the town manager, not the department head. I mean, obviously, he had a role in it, but, or to whom he's responsible.
Don?
Would it be prudent as part of this motion that after it's approved, that, uh, that we get town council, SCL, to chime in that this was within the, the purview interpretation of being able to change in this manner? And if, if it turns out it's not, then we can revisit it because I think the understanding that, as I heard, uh, Councilor Pay is that even if we went to the 500 formula and so forth, that's presently printed, that would still ye, uh, yield the same dollar amount. Is that correct? Or similar?
It would be a lower dollar amount from what I can tell, um, but it's, it's pretty hard to actually, to see. I mean, we could base it on last year's, uh, numbers, and, um, like I said, because that's not changed at all. And that would still be sufficient to, um, fund the department as needed.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I would hesitate to spend any money on council that we do not absolutely have to spend. And I think this is a, a question that's just a question of judgment and not a question of law.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, um, I, I believe we're ready to, uh, roll call vote on this particular motion. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
You're muted.
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
A point of information, it looks, Fanny in the audience would like to speak.
Brian?
Let me pull him in.
Please.
Hello? Hello? Um, I just want to let the council know that I do, I am over, uh, have oversight over the Board of Public Works. So the funding table I did do through the stormwater, um, was approved by them, um, through many, for at least three meetings. So was looked at sufficiently. And like I said, I've talked to many businesses over the past year during the initial phase of this stormwater, um, enterprise fund. And if the council did not pass it this evening, it would have been, uh, very upset, small business owners that obviously were getting charged, the same as some of these big companies, with acres and acres of impervious surface. Um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Motion eight.
Nine?
Eight.
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 I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $3,278,000 to the water enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021 as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled Water Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll start with our roll call vote. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Ready for motion nine.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $2,314,100 to the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021 as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion ten.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $310,854 to the stormwater enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021 as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
I'll second the motion. Discussion? Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Bless you. And I'm a yes. Motion eleven.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $215,600 to the LCAT enterprise fund for fiscal year 2021. As printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part thereof by reference entitled LCAT Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Okay. Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. Motion twelve.
I move the town vote to reauthorize revolving funds for various town departments appropriate pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half for fiscal year 2021 as follows. Revolving fund, solid waste disposal number 2805. Authorized to spend fund is the Health Department. Revenue source, sale of trash bags and recycling rebates. Use of funds, salaries, expenses, supplies, and contractual services to operate the solid waste disposal and recycling program. FYI spending limit, $176,960. Council on Aging Revolving Fund, number 2809. Authorized to spend fund, Council on Aging. Revenue source, General Council on Aging Programs and Events, such as fitness room memberships, exercise class fees, event fees. Use of funds, salaries, expenses, and contractual expenses to operate these programs at the Council on Aging. FYI spending limit, $19,540.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Don?
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 Muted.
Yes.
There you go. Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion twelve passes. Motion thirteen.
I move the town vote to raise and/or appropriate $581,503 by borrowing or otherwise for the construction, reconstruction, and/or maintenance of public ways to be expended under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works and said some to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Questions through the chair?
Tom?
This is probably a question for Mary. This is just offsetting our cost that's going to give us on chapter 90.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Kathy, I'll wait for you to finish your water and vote please.
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And, and I'm a yes. Motion passes. Motion fourteen. I move the town vote to authorize receipts reserved for appropriation for the ambulance fund pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5F, for the fiscal year 2021 as follows on the depicted chart below.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion fourteen passes. Motion fifteen.
I move the town vote to accept the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee and appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for fiscal year 2021 from the revenues estimated to be $250,000 for the purpose and amounts as follows. Administrative expenses 5%, historic resource reserve 10%, community housing reserve 10%, open space reserve 10%, undesignated general reserve 65%. And that the town transfer from the undesignated general reserve to the town's general fund to reimburse the town for the following. One, full bond payment of principal and interest of $48,800. Two, brown property payment of principal and interest $53,880.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion fifteen passes. All right. I, I believe all the voting has taken place and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we can close the public hearing at this point. And so so we will close the public hearing. And thank you all for your input and we have to, I'm sorry. Marilyn?
Want a motion to close the public hearing?
I was just going to ask for one, but thank you. Yeah. No, thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
We, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Pat?
Not really sure that's necessary. I think it's the prerogative of the chair, but, but fine.
Okay. Well, either way, we've covered it with a safety net. I was closing the public hearing. Now it's, I have a motion and it's been seconded. So we, I just want to touch base on, if we come down to orders of the day, we did make a motion to come out of order to.
Point of order, Mike?
Yes.
A motion and it was seconded, but we didn't take a vote on it.
Okay. I'm, I'm used to not having to have a motion to close the public hearing, so I apologize for that. But seeing that there was a motion and seconded on the floor.
You can withdraw it.
Go ahead. What's that, Pat?
You can withdraw your motion.
But, but if he, uh, point of order, if he does withdraw the motion, the second has to also be withdrawn. Might be just easy to vote.
I think, I think so too. Don?
Yes.
Pat? Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Kathy? Kathy's muted. Yes.
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Okay. So continuing on, as you all know, we bypassed, we, you know, we came out of order, took care of the public hearing, and we left nine B2 on the floor, which to me is non-relevant. Because we approved the budget, this 112 budget request is not relevant any longer. And let's see. So I would, I would ask anybody for any summary action requests for our next meeting.
I have a, a question for Jeannie. I would think this is relative to Amy Petroski's no longer using the revolving fund for the Sharps program. She has merged it with the very little it drew, she's merged it with, I forgot what she said, but don't we buy, aren't we required to dissolve that revolving fund, take action on it to resolve, to dissolve it?
Honestly, I'm not sure. That'd be like an accounting question. I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I'm not sure about that.
Well, if, if the answer becomes yes, then that would be on our next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. Through the chair, I think that might be a question for our town council, town attorney. I do recall that revolving funds were created by bylaws.
Okay. Marilyn?
I would have thought that revolving funds originally, unless you're talking after the change of the government, because originally they were a vote of the town meeting. I don't know with the change in government, maybe Ralph has the answer. Maybe it was through a bylaw, but originally it was an article of town meeting for the revolving funds.
I'm seeing that we'll make this a summary action item for next meeting. We can do our due diligence and then we can, it will be an agenda item and at that point in time we'll be able to have a conversation on it. So that being said, there is no executive session. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a second and this is going to require a roll call vote. And I will start with Marilyn.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yep.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
So we are adjourning at 8:00 PM this evening and reschedule.
I'm a yes, Mike.
I'm sorry?
I'm a yes.
I'm sorry, Tom. Thank you.
It's okay.
So we are adjourned at 8:00 PM and our next council meeting, it will be scheduled for August 11th at a predetermined time after I can get with Jeannie and see what we have scheduled for that meeting. Thank you all.
Good night.
Congratulations, congratulations, Mary.
Thank you so much.
Happy, happy.
Have a nice vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.